Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started now. Can you have the attention? We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We've got a few questions that we're gonna go over in a minute. What I wanna do is explain to you what's going on, why we're doing it, you know, the reason for it. There's seven points that I'm gonna make, and I'm gonna explain each one. And then we'll read the questions, and then we have some discussion. There's a little bit of discussion now. First question, you know, we get is, "Why is this happening?" Okay. This is not deconsolidation. We're not splitting up the consolidated government. All we're doing is trying to establish a city council and a parish council. The city council would handle city issues only. The parish council would handle all parish issues throughout the parish, no matter what it is. Anything having to do with parish funding, anything with parish, that they're gonna handle. Right now, we have, we consider to have four parish council members on the current council. What we're gonna do is add a fifth member. And that's the only thing that's being added. No staff, no locations changed, nothing changed. So the expense is very low. And we did that purposely because we didn't wanna drive up the cost of government because that's all we keep hearing is, you know, we keep growing government. So we don't wanna grow government. We just wanna make it better for the people that we represent. The second question is, "Why is this action necessary?" Okay. Our current budget that we deal with is $633 million consolidated government. The parish has $96 million of that. That's a lot of money. When I get calls from my parish people, and they're asking for their roads to be fixed and their dishes to be dug, and why is my bridge closed? And they tell me, "You've got $600 million in the budget, then why can't you fix it?" Well, the parish only has $96 million of that. And all but 12 million is dedicated. Can't just spend it on anything. So it makes it real deceiving when, you know, you think we have $633 million of tax dollars, your tax dollars, and that we can spend wherever we want, but we can't. The city dollars have to be in the city, and the parish can be parish-wide. So we need to clarify that. And doing what we're doing here is gonna make it a little bit easier for everyone to understand where the money's at, where it's coming from, and where it's gone. Okay? You know, some of the parish things that we're talking about, that the parish council would have to handle. The jail, the judges, the courthouse, the district attorney. We have, the rural areas have the ditches, coolies, bridges, that's causing us major issues right now. Roads. And all of that leads to different cities. There's six cities in this parish. You lead an unincorporated areas, you pass through the city, you back into unincorporated areas. Pass through another city, back into unincorporated areas. Well, for 12 million dollars, it's gonna give you a whole lot of money, a whole lot of flexibility. Because out of the 12 million, you got the DA, two and a half million. You have the judges, two and a half million. That's five million dollars. That is your seven million dollars of general fund money. And when you start looking at it, it's like, that's gonna be quick. You know? So we just did the re, I guess, repurposing of some villages, which gives a little, two more million dollars of parish money to go ahead and do more ditches and troops, which is great. But that money's gonna run out soon. So we need to address this on the parish level. And the city needs to address theirs on the city level. Because right now, with the way it's been, it's working, the city of Lafayette is paying upfront to do the work in the parish. And the parish has to reimburse the city for the work. And if we don't have the money to reimburse them, then we're violating the law. And that's the fact. If you look at our budget, it's real confusing. I mean, how many of you guys have looked at a budget book that we look at? This big. It's so confusing. I mean, I understand it now, but it took me a long time. It's just someone who never, that's never seen it, it's like, you're kidding me? You know, when you ask about a parish fund, about, it's just a drainage fund. Where is it in that big book? Good luck. So we're hoping if we can get this passed and have the parish on its own and the city on its own, then when you go to budget here, you go on there. Parish book, parish dollars. Everything's laid out. City book, city dollars. Everything's laid out. Broke out, not together, the way you can understand. The third thing we were asked is, "Why, let's see, why are we moving this along? Why are we doing this so fast?" Well, we're not doing it this fast. We've been talking about this since 2008, when I got elected. This has been an issue since, actually, '96, when it was put into place. It's hard to make you constituents understand how this government works. A lot of the council members have a hard time figuring that out. I mean, it's tough. So we're not rushing this. This has been going on for a while. In 2010, we formed the charter commission. I don't know if I remember the charter commission that we formed? And that was a group of people, not politicians. A group of laypeople got together, and we appointed, and they went through everything. And they fought, and they argued. And at the end of the day, they decided deconsolidation was the answer. Split the whole thing up. I didn't support that back then, I still don't support it. But we sent it to the people for a vote. People voted down, 65, 60% against. So it tells me they don't want deconsolidation, they don't wanna split this government up. Which is good, they keep the services together. That's what you wanna do. It runs more efficient that way. It doesn't cost you anything. You're entertaining. If you split, you're gonna have two public work departments. You gotta have, I mean, it's just, it gets crazy. The next thing was, "The process and the participation." You know, we were accused of doing this to the back door, you know, dark at night. Sneaky. I don't know if you watch me on TV, but ain't nothing sneaky about me. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you. We've been working on this for a while. We have a liaison team. It's the finance team. That's what I want. I've been on that for the past probably nine years. It's made up of myself, Bruce Call, Ken, and Joe and Kevin Nocken. The last four years, we took on some projects as far as with parish taxes. What, you know, let's look at our parish. What's the problem? How can we fix it? And we keep looking at it, and still to this day, it's hard to figure out how to fix the parish. Because we've got so many people involved in this game. You got nine council members that, five are city, four parish, all different ideas. So it's tough. When we put this together, the mapping and everything, you know, they accuse me personally of doing some underhanded things with the mob. You know, who's paying this guy and all this good stuff. Mike Heffernan did me a favor. Mike's the one who drew these things up. This is not final. This is just what we introduced. This will change. I promise you it's gonna change. But nothing underhand. He volunteered to do this work for me. Okay? Now, when it becomes final, then we're gonna have a public process of who we're gonna hire to make it final. So this is voluntary work. And he did it for me, just to kinda help guide someone's process. So it's one thing to get it cleared. Nobody paid him. The government didn't pay him. Nobody hit him. And it came out the Thursday, last Thursday, I think it was, or what was it? When it came out, it went out. The thing was made public at that time. No sneaking. And when it was finished, it went out. Now, like I said, it's gonna change because if you look at the districts, especially the city side, district one starts at the top, and it goes all the way down. I wanna say the academy or whatever. Don't make much sense, does it? Well, I'll explain to you in a little while why it don't make sense and why we're gonna have to change it. Another question was, "Why not wait to do this till after the 2020 census?" Okay? Well, if you wait till after the 2020 census, it's gonna happen in 2021. That means we're gonna be in the same form of government for another five and a half to six years with no changes. And things are just getting worse and worse and worse. And nobody's paying attention to the shortfalls on the parish side. Nobody's watching. And if we don't change it now, going into the 2020 election, it's gonna be detrimental to the parish at the end of the day and the city. Because when you redo your census in 2020, you're gonna have a shift in the balance with the population. Right now, you have a heavy city, 55% city, 45% parish. It's gonna flip. We're gonna have more parish than the city of Lafayette. And that's an issue to the citizen of the city of Lafayette. And that's just a fact. That's what's gonna happen. And we're that close. We developed that heavy in the outline areas and in the other cities. So just to let you know that, it's time that we do something. Because we keep talking about it, keep talking about it, keep talking about it, and nobody wants to make the move. They're scared to change. So we took it, and we're trying to change it for the best. That's what we're doing. You know? Nothing sneaky. We've been out there talking about it. Let's see, let's see, that's what we heard. Term limits. That was a big one. And the new document, we're gonna have an amendment in it that the four council members today that are termed out would not be able to run for any one of the new offices being established. They cannot run in 2020, 2019. They can't run. They're termed out. Now, there's another amendment coming from Ms. Good, Ms. Ebert. And their amendment is gonna term limit themselves also. Because if they have four years in, they'll have four years in. And they'll only be able to run for eight more, and that's it. They'll turn themselves out. So we're taking care of the term limit issue that everybody had a problem with. Yeah, I saw a couple of questions about it, and that's, we're handling that right now. We don't want anybody to think that Jay Castillo wants to run for another 12 years. Jay Castillo is very tired. He served his 12. He did what he could. It's time for somebody else to take over and run with it. So term limits are no longer an issue. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that. Because that was a very, very big topic. Now, let's talk about the map. Those two issues are probably the biggest, and it's the map. The map on your left is the city map. And the map on the right is the parish map. This was introduced at our first meeting. This is not a final drawing of anything. This was a start, it was a beginning. So as we go through, as Mike and I work through this, and Bruce is working through numbers and trying to work things out, we have to start with the majority-minority district in the city. I'm gonna talk about the city first. That's, that is the Department of Justice rule. Have to do that, okay? And that just so happens to be on that map, District 5, which is the east side of the city of Lafayette, the northeast side. That district is considered to be the minority-majority district right there. And from there, you start breaking off, and you start placing. Okay? And if you notice, everybody's district in the city pretty much kinda stays pretty decent, except for the top district, which is our district. If you sit around and see. That district is gonna change. Because me personally, I can't live with something that looks like that. You know? If someone who lives in the city of Lafayette and lives in District 1, on the north end of the city, that to go and campaign and try to help someone who lives all the way down by Target down there, doesn't make any sense to me. So we're working on changing that. Now, remember, every time we change something, it affects something else. If we move that line up, we bring that blue line up, it's gonna change District 5 and District 4. Everything starts to change. There's a certain thing called a deviation number that the Department of Justice has in place. And you can't go above minus 5 or plus 5% of population. So every time you move it, the number fluctuates. For instance, there's a box, I call it a box, a precinct right off of Cameron Street. There's a small, small precinct on there. It's got about 4,000 people in it, precinct. It's a little bit precinct, but it's so heavily populated and dense that every time you move it into somebody else's district, his number's jumped. So you gotta be careful. You know, you can't just go in there and draw a line and say, "Okay, the advantage is away." You're gonna split that, it's gonna be two districts, one here, one there. Well, that don't work, because the numbers don't. Population deviation. You get to the parish side, same thing. You have to start with the majority-minority district, which is District 5 again, and you have to work around. And it's a pretty good-sized district in the parish. If you look at it, we forgot that one, close. I'm not saying it's final, but it's close because the deviation numbers are good. First one, the deviation numbers are not that great. But we're gonna work on it. Okay. Like I said earlier, I'm kinda coloredblind. So I'm gonna say north, south, east, west, and south. How's that? Okay? Yeah, amazing. You haven't think that was real? You thought that was some, just an old saying, an old wise tale? You know, I didn't make that map. I can show you. Okay. Oh, I asked me colors. Okay. This one here, District 5, that color. District 3. Let's go here. I-10, I-49. Got our bearings? Okay. District 1. District 2. 3, 4, 5. That's parish.
District 2 is blue.
Here. That's District 1. That's District 1. These are the new maps. These are the new maps. These are the map that we introduced at the council meeting. Not what we're on today. This is what's introduced. Okay? City map, the blue one on top, that's District 1. Swings around, 2, 3, 4, 5. It does like this, pound of clock. Okay? Now, can you follow me now? Yep? Okay. Now, to get back to the population. When you're moving these districts around, and those of you guys who are familiar with it, I know there's a couple of you guys in here who are familiar with that. Every time you move something, every time a precinct moves to another area, it's gonna affect something below it or on top of it. So it's a challenge to get everything between that plus or minus 5% deviation number that's required. We did some changes to one on the plane with me and Mike, and one had a deviation of 13, the other had a deviation of 2. It's like, and they're on the next door to each other. You know, it's like, well, this can't work. So that's why we have issues with designing these things. But we're getting closer on the city map, we're working on it. The parish is close, very close, as far as deviations. So this is probably a snapshot of what we're gonna be looking at adopting on this one, on the parish side. Not saying it's final, but we still got a couple of tweaks before that happens. But that city map is definitely gonna change. No doubt. Okay? Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through the questions that were written, and then I might take a couple of them from the audience, but I'm gonna try to keep it brief. Definitely not controversial. We evolve one. We're all here for the same reason. We all wanna learn. I wanna learn. I wanna run my class. Fifty, sixty to do, I stick my mic in my mouth. Okay?
I have to put your socks on.
Well, of course! If I put my plaid, I got blue. I got red. I got blue. I got a day, but I don't. My shoes have numbers on. I kid you not. Okay, the first question here. "The format and procedures for the charter held on the July 10th meeting and this meeting." Nobody signed it, so I don't know what you mean by that. I mean, if you're the audience...
Those recommendations go outside your jurisdiction onto public, the general public? Where do you all get legal authority to do that?
Well, Mr. Brasso, I can tell you we had two attorneys working on this. And what we're producing is through legal. It's not through Jay Castillo, Ken Ojo, where it was called, okay? If the legal challenge is given, then it happens. But I can assure you, the attorneys vet everything that we did. So you got it. If I was an attorney, I'd be answering. I'm sure glad I'm not an attorney. I can't give you a legal, I can't give you a legal opinion because Attorney General, I'm giving one. He won't give me one. How's that? He won't give me one either. You asked him that question, because I asked him a hundred times. Well, you don't have to. He won't give me one. So, next question. Good luck at that. "In the proposed charter amendments, Article 4, Section 4-03, why is the city parish attorney allowed to engage assistants without any council approval?" Okay? Now, the city parish attorney is appointed, is appointed by the mayor and is accepted by the council. It's his job to handle all legal issues pertaining to the government. Well, it's impossible for one attorney to handle everything that this government has. So he has the authority to go out and hire assistants. And he has a lot of different assistants for a lot of different reasons that specialize in a lot of different areas that we get sued over, or to make sure we don't get sued over, that type of stuff. So he has the power to hire his own assistants. He hires one, and he hires the rest.
Is it currently the council that has to approve?
We approve the city parish attorney only. It's up to him to hire who he has to hire. Let's see. "How will these developments directly affect Cambridge? Will the funding of any municipalities be attacked? Will this attack homeowners financially in any way?" No. This doesn't, this has no tax authority at all in what we're doing. We're just splitting councils. That's all we're gonna do, is split the council. That's it. I live in the city here. And I kinda dare somebody to come take my, attack dollars in the city, okay? So, yes, this will not affect anybody, any homeowners, any city resident of Cambridge, or any municipality within the parish. This is just strictly the council's. That's what we're doing. So they can focus on their own needs. That's the whole crust of it. "How much would the increase in planning and zoning commission members cost?" The planning and zoning commission members are volunteers. They don't cost us none. They're there, and they volunteer their time to come to their readings and make decisions. We're gonna have a parish planning commission, a zoning commission, and we're gonna have a city of Lafayette planning and zoning. So it's gonna be split. We still have one department that's gonna handle all issues. That's gonna change, the same process is gonna happen. Just like today.
Did you elaborate on that? Does, uh... Both planning commissions are gonna operate under the same building codes?
Yes. The parish currently adopts the same building codes in the city. Yes.
Why we have to? Why you would need to?
Because when the city, when the parish, because the parish doesn't have zoning right now. Okay, what we have is called the land use program. So we don't have zoning. So any issue pertaining to zoning, I'll call it in the parish, goes, gonna have to go to the parish planning commission to be handled. Through zoning, we'll go to the city council. The planning part is the same thing. There's, the parish can make a set of rules on a planning side. Like, let's say, as a parish, I would think, say, five council members decide, "Well, we'd like to see our parish do this." Like the UDC was passed. We look at the UDC, it helps some people, hurt some people. As a parish government, we can draw our own plans. And we each city, sit with them and see if we get all, get on the same page. Because we're still not on the same page. And we would like to be on the same page as when a person builds a house in city Cambridge, and then when he goes to unincorporated areas, the parish, it's two different things. Or when he goes from city of Lafayette, and then he goes to city of Russo already. Two different things. So the parish has the ability to work with all the cities, try to get everything the same, so everyone is on the same plane. Don't fear anyone. That's what the parish planning commission is gonna do. That answer your question? The person who funds...
Actually, you had mentioned that there was gonna be no will to increase costs other than adding an extra council.
Right.
At 5.5. Well, now you're talking about having a city planning commission and having a parish planning commission. So those are the farmers that are doing double duty. You're gonna have to end up splitting those up.
The people who do the double duty, nobody do the double duty.
Well, you have, you have one division doing parish work and city work.
They're doing parish work now, they're doing city work now.
And it's all volunteer.
It's all, it's all volunteer. Those commissions are volunteer. There's no pain. The planning zoning department is gonna stay as is. Inspection is gonna stay as, nothing's gonna change. No, there won't be any added cost to that. Somebody say, "Well, they're gonna have two duties a month, one for the parish, one for the city."
But are there any other divisions within the UDC that are doing both parish and city work? Or have to be divided up once you have a separate council?
Our commissions, those commissions, planning is on commissions are two main boards. Okay, that's what kind of governs everything. There's some smaller things within the government that we have to split. But it's all volunteer stuff. There's nothing that's gonna cost us anything. Getting back to the employees who have to attend these meetings. These employees are directors. They're on site, and they gotta work. And they're gonna work, just like they do now. They hold special meetings, regular meetings. They attend, they rule, they do what they have to do, but they're attending. Let's see, where was I? "The person who funds for the representation, who runs for the representation of the unincorporated areas should be required to live in the unincorporated area. All cities should not be able to do any more renexations." That is why the unincorporated areas is broken. Yeah, you can say that. But with a parish in place, a parish council in place, there's rules and stuff that they can do. And I know St. Tammany Parish did it. When you annex property from the unincorporated areas in St. Tammany... in St. Tammany, they split that sales tax in half, because you're taking half of the parish money onto the city. Now, do we wanna do that? I don't know, I'm not running, it's gonna be a whole group of guys to talk about, and gals. But to say that the person who runs to represent unincorporated areas has to live in unincorporated areas, I'd have to say that's illegal, you can't force that. Because you live in a district, and you should be able to run for that district. Regardless of where you live inside that district. So, something like that would be legally challenged. "How can the parish and city vote jointly on matters when members of both councils represent the same..." Okay, who wrote, Chris, one, Chris?
I did.
There you go. Explains it up to me.
Okay, well, your two maps. I took the mentions of the Lafayette city and I figured out where it is on the parish map, okay? The parish has already been divided into five districts, and all those five districts cover the whole parish. And yet the city districts, parts of them cover the parish districts. So you have citizens living within the city districts and the parish districts, to say that. And on joint decisions, a parish member, a parish council member and a city council member will be representing the same person. But for other people, they will only, they will have one representative on one council.
Just like the city of Karenbro would have the same thing, city of Brussels would have the same thing. Any municipality would have that, okay? The city of Lafayette is gonna be just like the city of Karenbro, Brussels, Youngsville, Scott, and Duson. They're gonna have their own council. So, the parish person who represents the city of Lafayette in the city, if he lives in the city, is a parish rep, he's still voting on parish issues.
Do citizens of the city of Karenbro vote on ordinances or resolutions for the parish?
No, no, they don't, they vote for their own.
This would allow the city to?
No, no.
That's what it reads.
No, it's not how it reads. I can assure you. The city of Lafayette, once the city of Lafayette is established, they cannot vote on a parish issue.
And what are the joint functions of the Lafayette consolidation?
Say it again.
And what are the joint functions that they have to agree upon?
The only joint function the parish council and the city of Lafayette councils are gonna have to agree on would be, uh, like benefits for employees, raises for employees, that type of thing. That's what they have to agree on. Everything else is separate, the books is separate. So projects, separate. That's what separates it.
Funding isn't a joint issue?
Funding, when you say funding, there's no such thing as joint funding in this building. You got parish funds and you got city funds. Can't go maybe, can't join together, out, it's illegal.
I support the city of Lafayette in wanting its own autonomy. I just don't understand how they can be, the city can be a part of the parish government, but yet separate.
And they're part of the parish government, just like every other city is.
Well, technically, no, the city of Karenbro is not a part of the Lafayette consolidation.
The city of Karenbro is part of the parish, just like Lafayette is.
Yes.
The consolidation go, is an entity of services. That's it. That's all they do, they're not, they're not a taxing district, nothing, they're just services. The taxing district is the city of Lafayette and the parish of Lafayette, okay? I think that, I'm not sure if you understand what I'm saying. The LCP, Lafayette consolidation go, is just services, that's all they are. They can't impose any, they can't impose any, any funding, they can't, no taxes, nothing. They're just services.
So then, why do both councils have to agree on it? Like, I just don't understand the purpose, because as separate governmental entities, couldn't they have contracted with each other for particular services, rather than do the whole consolidation?
You're gonna have contractual services with the parish in the city of Lafayette, and the parish in the city of Karenbro, and the parish in the city of Brussels. You're gonna have those contractual services, you're gonna have that, same, just like today.
It just...
It's confusing.
It just doesn't make sense, if it's a separate city, it should be a separate city, within the contract of specific services, because right now, there's no really specific services in this city here, it just says governmental functions, and then it may include this, but it's not.
Governmental functions, every digit, all the streets. That's governmental functions, that's, that's a service, that's a service.
So, that type of service, the city would have to agree with the parish. A governmental function, if streets need to be cleaned, or a city district need to be cleaned, bridges need to be replaced, would that need for a single council, or that would have to be a joint?
If it's in the city of Lafayette, it's paid for by city dollars, it's a city council matters. If it's a parish issue, then the parish decides. See, there's no, they don't make the decisions together on that project, okay?
Jay, I have a question.
It's confusing, but we'll keep working on it.
Will we share public works in this new?
Yes, yes, we will share public works, yes.
Perhaps, clarification, basically, you're saying that every municipal, every unincorporated area, Lafayette, Karenbro, and all of this, unincorporated areas, they would get to vote for the parish council. They also vote for their city council, Karenbro would vote for the city council and the parish representing. Uh, there's one segment that's left out that I have to be in, and that's the unincorporated area. And the problem with it, which brings us to the second problem, is that when the area in the unincorporated area starts to produce revenue, simple one, right? The incorporated areas annex. And guess what the unincorporated areas get to? They can their damn own problems. And guess what happens to the revenue that used to be involved in the incorporated area, and as a result? We keep hearing, well, the parish government doesn't have any money. If you went back to the boundaries and tax course of the boundaries where the city very early was installed, I promise you, the unincorporated areas would have no problems. That's where all the growth is taking place. When the growth takes place, it gets annexed by the incorporated areas.
Exactly, you got it. Biggest problem. Okay, so, how this is gonna help? You take five parish council members, and you sit them down and tell them you thought it gonna happen? Fix it. Right now, what you got? Who you gonna tell it to? Nine guys, nine council members, okay? Okay, nine guys, city of Lafayette and parish, okay?
Even if it's Karenbro, so we don't care about us that live there.
Oh, don't say that.
Yes, I can.
Don't say that, don't say that. Don't say that. Uh-huh, uh-huh, no, 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 no. I actually don't have to get negative, but if you wanna go there, I can play that game, I'm not gonna play tonight.
Why can't Richard Loewen and Jerry O'Sullivan?
Let me explain to you why William Terry was so smart and has all the answers in the world. I'll tell you right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Claus.
Oh, no, oh, no. I'm gonna, no, no, I'm gonna tell you exactly. No, let me explain it to you, I'm explaining it very well, if you don't see it. If a city, Karenbro, okay, and according to Mr. Terry's wisdom, annexes everything north and everything west, okay? They become responsible for those areas, correct? What do you think that's gonna do to their taxes?
We didn't, the unincorporated areas taxes now.
You know what's gonna happen? Okay. They're gonna have to tax you, who lives in unincorporated areas, so more money to get out there to protect you with fire protection, police protection, and everything else. That's more taxes for you to pay, that you're gonna have to pay for the city protection, and the city services. Now, on top of that, you have fi, hold on. You have fire insurance ratings.
Jay, the growth of the tablet already got taken.
No, no. No, look at the white, look at the white, it haven't been grown, it hasn't been done yet. Hang on, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Your fire rating will go from Karenbro to four, it'll go to ten. You know that does the insurance rates? It's gonna trip, trip. That's for a house, let's think what a business is gonna cost. So it's impossible to do that. The third thing is, you can't go out and grab people, it's gotta be a voluntary annexation. They have to agree to be annexed into a city, so you can't force that. Now, I know a lot of country folks, you know, and I know, they don't wanna live in no city, okay? That's the problem with that scenario. It's not a viable scenario.
But like Mr. Claus was saying, we live in the unincorporated areas. We spend ninety-five percent of everything we buy, whether it's groceries or anything, we live in the city of Karenbro.
Absolutely.
But the city of Karenbro has already taken the unincorporated areas and annexed them, so that they took the unincorporated areas' taxes. So now, we're broke by default, because we had nothing to say about Karenbro taking our unincorporated areas.
The city of Karenbro had been annexed in years, okay? I feel that's annexed. Brussels, Youngsville annexed a lot. City Karenbro developing within its corporate limits today.
We understand, I'm talking about Karenbro.
Yeah, but the choice is, the choice is, and it's a third choice we make. We choose to live in unincorporated areas. We don't choose to live in the city of Karenbro, because we like our freedom in the country, we like our horses in our backyards. In the city of Karenbro, we choose to live here because we don't want horses in our backyard. We want different things, okay, for some of us. But that's, that's the difference, the choice we make to live in the unincorporated areas. If that's an issue, that can be fixed, that's a choice. That five, that five parish, five member parish council, that'd be a good job for them, wouldn't it? Okay, Mr. Mayor, here's...
Uh, I'd just like to clarify one thing off. You know, we get the blame for annexing all unincorporated areas, all towns. The fact of the matter is, Karenbro, we have, we've made some line adjustments, uh, over the years, but in the last fifteen years, I don't think we've annexed big areas. So what happened is, super one was brought up, but that was in the city since the sixties. Okay, so let's say, let's say, uh, a chain, uh, bigger than a dollar general in those, they, they wanna build a store, it's not feasible, they want water, sewer, and natural gas, which the parish doesn't offer, so they're gonna go either go to the city of Lafayette, or Karenbro, or Scott, or Brussels, or Youngsville. So they come to us to annex for the services, and that's, that's the only cause that, you know, the city annexed the I-49 area back in the early sixties.
The annex because it's ultimately the revenue producer.
Sure, but it's...
Or that it is balanced, if it, if it in the short term requires services, it'll be collecting for the mountain, the city charges, Brussels. And then the issue with the, with the business established, the value of the property will increase, increase property tax, and the sales that are generated by that business will increase property tax to the municipality. Now, unincorporated areas, you know, but we don't have the authority to annex for Karenbro. You know, so, so is there fairness about that?
Judge, I didn't write the law.
But if it's, if it's unfair, it seems to me that the funds is on the parish in the system. Now, if y'all want to make this part area for glory's switch, all the way to the parish line, as a town of Karenbro, come on, that's simple, at least that has itself. At least the revenue for use behind the community is being changed. I said, I'm from Karenbro, Karenbro is a little...
Can't hear. One of the things that was brought up that possibly, revenue sharing? Hey, I'm open to it, I'm not saying I agree, but I'm open to speaking to the new parish council to try to work things out.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be that parish council's challenge, it's two of those things, okay?
Why can't this parish council?
Because this council has five city of Lafayette members on it.
That's right.
Okay, you have five city council members on it, four parish members. We've been, they've been showing, they've showed their hands in the past, many times. And I've been on, I've been on the losing end of the thing many times, five, four, five, four. So, we fixing that with this, guaranteed, no, no, we gonna fix it. This is how it works. This is how you, let me ask y'all one question, let me ask y'all one, everybody one question, before I get back to these questions. Is there a perfect government in the United States of America? Thank you for answering the question, okay? It will always change, it will never be the best thing for everybody. Right now, what we have is not good. It's not good for the people who live in the unincorporated areas of the parish. It's not good for the smaller towns, and it's not good for the city of Lafayette, it's not.
That's what we were hearing in ninety-six.
That's not, that's true.
I wasn't there in ninety-six.
I was.
I was working. I wasn't elected official in ninety-six, so I couldn't tell you. I know Conrad Cuomo, who was, I think, part of that in ninety-six, he made the comment publicly that, that was about the, the biggest mistake he made was voting for consolidation. He admitted that when he took the public, that's a fact, so...
The parish had voted it down, the general parish had voted it down. The city of Lafayette passed it with more votes than what we had, we had to live with it. Now that's what you said, which we're aware of, there might be at some point in time, enough people in the parish, and that's what they're afraid of, the city, that we'll outvote them.
I got you, I understand that. But let me ask you something, this whole time that this government's been in the fair since nineteen ninety-six to two thousand eighteen, has it been fair to you?
No.
Thank you, okay, thank you. That's the answer I wanted to hear. So what you telling me is you wanna flip it and stick it to them and be like, just like they were to us?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm just curious, but that's what's gonna happen.
That's a wonderful thing.
Okay, but if we do this, we don't have to worry about that anymore.
If we had it to fund, as you know, the road to his office is here with us tonight. We have to fund the sheriff's office, we have to fund the parish jail, all of which, you go to jail right now, I can tell you, there's more people from the city in the jail than the parish. Okay, but y'all, we, we, the parish is paying for it.
It's a parish mandate, yes, we pay for it.
Now, I'm gonna go further, you'll get to my question, which the judge touched on earlier. But in nineteen ninety-six, they should have passed, the should is in the past, they should have passed and ordered the statute that no more annexation could occur. Because that's what the parish was booking on, and we would have some tax revenue. Why though, if y'all considering what y'all doing now, why don't you put that on the ballot? That there's no more annexation?
We've been told that it's illegal, that we cannot stop someone from annexing if they wanna be annexed to the city.
Count first, why don't you put on the ballot, or a separate ballot?
No, that has nothing to do with it.
I'm from St. Tammany, and I'm aware of what St. Tammany did. Put it on there, let's go back to the ninety-six basis, and let's share half of the taxes. Because it's all people spending money in Lafayette and all those.
It's not, it's not just city Lafayette, it's all the cities. We spend money in all the cities, okay? So, we try for fairness, it hasn't been fair since ninety-six.
Well, it's not fair right now to the folks that are still having the fun.
But we have to make, we have to start somewhere, and this is a start, it's just a start, it's not perfect. All right, this has nothing to do with funding, okay? But y'all not understanding what I'm trying to say. You need some funds? I agree with you, and you know, you know how you get more funds? You pay more taxes. It's gonna fall from the tree, it's gonna fall from the tree, come on, man. Listen, come on, come on, we all know what it takes now, come on.
Every time you shop in Karenpro, we've been, and look, I don't wanna be fighting down Karenpro. We in this together, but that's a, that's a fairness board.
Yeah, I understand.
Very underpaid, all of the revenue producer.
Totally understand, yeah.
Hold more taxes, well, why should we be paying more taxes, when we paying the taxes that, that's going to other government bodies that don't affect us at all?
You're not paying taxes to those other government bodies.
And this we do.
When you go shop there, charts you make.
What charts?
Again, you go back to charts and you make.
I'm sorry, there's no super.
Okay? I'm just saying, it's your charts, it's your charts, okay? Or, or postcard. We just break that question, can I ask you?
Where you consider, where you consider going to and putting on the ballot that we go back and share the tax revenue of what we're paying?
Yeah, that's a good thought.
We can talk about it, but I can pretty much tell you, I can pretty much tell you, it ain't gonna happen. I could, I could suggest it, but it ain't gonna happen, I could suggest it.
Jason, it'll be a five-four, bro.
Five-four, that goes you five-four again. I'm being realistic with that, I'm, I'm serious. This is, this is real. Okay, Mr. Brayden, this is your question. How did I answer your question already?
Uh, somewhere, I think you may want to cover it.
How do you intend to produce our core funds with the continuity ability of all cities, including Lafayette, to annex all potential tax base, business except? Yeah, I think we actually, we kind of go with a pretty good, pretty good conversation. And I understand, believe me, I really do. And I'm not making light of it, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand, Mr. Brayden, I understand that everybody's talking about. But I feel in my heart, that this is gonna be a start to try to fix that and stop it. Because right now, we are voting five-four every single day. It's that simple.
Yeah, but being out voted, how's that gonna add any money to what you?
Nothing's gonna add any money to anything, hold on, nothing's gonna add any money to anything you do unless you pay for it. You got to pay taxes, no matter what you do, where you go, if you want a service, you gotta pay for it, that's it.
We paying the taxes, we're just trying to get our share.
I understand, it's the fairness, the mayor's plan, he is open to listen to that, and that's a start, okay?
Okay, if, if, if for instance, this area, Karenpro and all the surrounding unincorporated areas became a municipality, you wouldn't have any problem for, as far as the tax, the tax base, because the taxes we'd be paying, would be going to support other.
So, you're saying that the unincorporated areas become a city?
Become part of the municipality. And the area, area surrounding Dusso would become part of the town. This area surrounding Scott.
You can't, you can't, you can't just do that, you, you, it sounds good, but you, you can't force annex first, you can't force anyone to do anything as far as annex. It's gotta be about there, that's the truth. The dream, the dream deal would be to annex everything, put it all together, the dream deal is to be ongoing, everybody on the one level. But that ain't ever gonna happen in my lifetime, or my great grandfather's. Okay? No, 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 we discussed that till we blew the face. So, trust me. Next question, why, why deconsolidation now, with the money allocation, allocation, I guess, the city and parish be changed? The allocation formula that, that we use, I guess, what you talking about? Uh, we use an allocation formula to decide on, well, how much the parish pays the city for certain things. Uh, like say, say for me, the city pays probably about seventy-eight percent of what I usually, in my salary, the parish gets the rest. Uh, public works employees, it's the same thing, there's an allocation formula that's figured, how much the parish pays for that employee, and how much the city pays that employee. And it's, back in the day, it was close to fifty-fifty, but now we, we're approaching eighty-twenty, city picking up the tax. That's getting very close. Is it handy, or is it beside the judge? Oh, I said two or rather, no, it'll be a hip hopter. That's getting very close, but I lost him, okay? That's, and I hate that, that's something I don't have, this is what prevent that. Okay, next one, what revenue stream do you see to increase parish funds? And how do we fund all parish entities with the planning governance? It's.
Jay, that was popular.
Yeah, I know, I bet you see it more than.
I served on the city council, I was also part of the charter commission, so I know all these questions that came up. But, but my biggest thing is this, is the unincorporated area having no funds. The city of Broussard, the city of Yountville are very aggressive in their annexation. City of Lafayette has done a very poor job of, uh, annexing, but they, they should have done. And I can only see the, uh, the unincorporated areas being gobbled up, and in the other incorporated areas. And if you notice, anytime, and I'm not picking on Karenpro, because Karenpro doesn't do this. The city of Broussard, the city of Yountville, they are aggressive in annexing commercial property. You go in Yountville, and you go in Broussard, you go all of these big subdivisions, none of them going in the, uh, in the city. They want, like to be in the city, but they're not, because they don't produce any revenue for that city, that's why they don't annex it.
Right, and that's the concept behind annexation, with the progressive city, what they're trying to do, they're trying to do. Uh, but there's a lot of communities that have been annexed since the Yountville, like the last four, five years, and Broussard. Uh, but yes, you know, we keep going, it's, it's an old story, you know, that the unincorporated areas are shrinking, you know, we losing money, and, and I agree. But when you look at the geographical area, I wish I had the map over here, just the current map would look like. The, the unincorporated area that surround all these cities are bigger than the cities put together, when you look at the size, geographical wise, not population wise, okay? There's a lot of land out there in unincorporated areas. So, it's, we moved the new parish council to bringing businesses to these areas. These subdivisions that are built out in the unincorporated areas, they gotta travel, yes. That parish council, we moved them to go get these people, these companies, and bring them to the unincorporated areas. That, that would be something for them to do, that, that, that's their job, is to take care of unincorporated areas. And that's what we trying, it, it just, we, we, the way this government's set up right now, fighting the city of Lafayette, because it's just a city of Lafayette and unincorporated areas together in this government, okay? Remember, I was the only council that, that approved this, I'm just trying to figure it out. But this is gonna allow a parish council to do exactly what every city is doing, cut and dry. They also can work with the cities on different functions, on different amount of grants, or whatever it could be. The parish councils can do a lot of things. People don't believe, but the parish council is supposed to be the most powerful governing body in that parish, that, that, that council right there. That's supposed to be the most powerful body, and today is the weakest body. We did it to ourselves, that's it, we voted for it twice, we did it. Okay? Okay?
A little known, unknown fact, every consolidated government in the United States, not one has deconsolidated successfully. So this is not deconsolidated.
Correct, this is not deconsolidation, this is just a separation of the legislative branch. Go ahead and make decisions for its own representatives, its own people.
Mr. Castile, Mr. Castile, I have a question. These two proposed councils are five members and five members.
Yes, ma'am.
That would leave, leave, uh, leave a majority, three out of five, on decisions, correct?
Um, um, you know, try to.
Majority.
Three, yeah, three majority, yeah, three out of five is majority.
Three seems like a very low number, to make decisions for a whole city and a whole parish.
Okay, let me explain that, I understand what you're saying.
And I, I don't, that does not sound fair to me. Three voting members, making decisions for a proposed city council.
I had the same conversation today.
And parish councils.
Okay. How many of y'all wanna pay for nine parish council members?
That's not my question.
Hold on, hold on, let me explain, let me explain. Okay, nobody wants to pay for nine? No, 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 nine separate parish council members, and that the city have five or seven. Anybody wanna pay for that? Thank you, thank you. So I understand what you're saying, three is a little number, not a five, yes, five is just a little number. But nobody that I've, I've talked to agreed to nine member parish council. I, I talked to city residents about this topic. I said, how about seven, if you think seven would be a good number, this is a little pick. No, we wanna stick with five, no politicians, we tired of paying for it. This is what I'm getting from people, from meetings, from groups, not individuals, this is groups. Yes, nine would be great, it would work out perfect, nine parish councils. It would work out to be twenty-three thousand, twenty-three thousand people per district, great, but we don't have that luxury. We try to keep this thing as much cost-effective as possible, and by adding in one member, for thirty thousand dollars a year, is it, that's the best, the cheapest way to go, to get it the representation that we need. Now, if y'all think, you wanna pay for nine, you let me know. I'll push nine, but we want to pay for it. I mean, it works out great, I mean, the map, nine looks out perfect, so we got that in there, it works out great. But you're still separating the city and the parish, the city's still gonna get their council, whether it be five, or seven, whatever it is. Y'all wanna go for nine, and pay for it, I'm all in.
What additional services would Karen benefit if I had a different service council?
Services?
Yes.
It, it, you won't have any different services, but you have more flexibility to, right now we got two drainage crews that take care of the top parish. We got two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand people in this parish, we got two drainage crews. A parish council, instead of having to wait in line on that list that, that y'all fixing to see on TV, they can go out and contract, with a contract, to head to take care of certain areas that need attention immediately. Right now, you, you can't have that, you can't do it, it's impossible, okay? So, that's something that a parish council can focus on. If, if, I, I mean, my area's got a lot of drainage problems, it really does, but I know fixed a lot, and we still got a lot. If I, if I was a member of that five member council, and I needed four-hundred grand to go do a drainage project somewhere, I'm dealing with five guys, or ladies, excuse me, I'm a young man. And I gotta convince, right now I gotta convince eight other people to do that project.
Eight, five.
Okay? But five to stay alive, they want five to stay alive. But I tell you what, I brought a couple of them up, and it was, they shot me down, seven, two, a couple, now me and Karenpro on the wrong end. Okay, because we had a big project to do on. But five, that's what you dealing, and the parish guys, or ladies, dealing with those types of things. They can go out, and they can hire contractors to come in and fix an area, quick, get it out of the way. Okay, now, the money, we have, hang on, hang on, I know the money thing is coming. I've been doing this too long, I know the money thing is coming. We only have a certain amount of money. Okay, we have, we have dedicated villages that everybody in this parish pays, city of Lafayette, city of Karenpro, city of Broussard. Every city pays, and everyone in the incorporated area pays. They'll pay the same amount of meals as, as everybody else. Uh, you believe it or not, but the funds that get, that we get from those villages, go through the unincorporated areas in this parish. Not the city of Karenpro, not the city of Broussard, not the city of Lafayette, they all spent in the unincorporated areas now. You can't tell, you never see a truck out there, hate it all the time, I ain't seen a, I don't see a truck out here in years. Hate it all the time. The money that's collected from the drainage crews and the road villages are spent in the unincorporated areas. That's a fact, it's a fact of life, you know, it is. You know? Talk about it. But, that, that goes to show you that, that the funding, the funding is an issue everywhere, but especially in this parish. And these five guys, or ladies, will have their responsibility to figure out a way to get around it. And there's ways to go with federal government and get grants, there's ways to go to state get grants, that they can do projects that need to be done, okay? Yes.
Not no money.
No money, representation, better representation.
Y'all heard that?
That's it, better representation. I'm leaving it out, I don't call anybody back. Yes, ma'am.
Who would be allowed to vote on this, the whole parish?
Parish, my vote, everybody, everybody votes.
I can't write, so if you depend on reading my question, you will come up. Can I?
Sure, sure, come on, come on, let me have it.
My question is, uh, why is it certain streets, they kept up the road and the driveway entrances? And although it was the parish's fault that I had erosion on my driveway?
Okay, you and I, after this is over, we're gonna talk, that's a separation, but we're gonna address that, it only, okay? I hope we don't leave it in a place like that, it only, it'll talk about it, it's this.
Yeah, so, I think you kinda touched on it, but I didn't understand fully. So if you were representing the unincorporated areas of Karenpro, I think, so you're not running, but if you were, uh, you could get grants? Like if this went through, you could get grants for their, for district two? Could you, if you were in a separate council, like if this happens, if this vote happens, and you separate yourself, the person representing district two, they could go out and get grants for district two?
They can go out as a parish go, as a parish go.
As a parish, and it would have to split.
As a five, no, no, no. It could, it could be dedicated, like right now we have, we have, we have a group, it's called the NPU, I don't know if anybody's heard of it, the Metropolitan Panalization. It's, it's got, it goes out and gets federal grants for certain things. Uh, I was able to probably tie on about four-hundred thousand dollars of that money out of nine, okay? That's a lot of money for one district. But, I did it, I was able to do it, and the same thing gonna happen with these five parish council members. They can go to the NPU, choose what's important, and get those federal grants, and get it done. I did it, the way I did it, I don't wanna sing, because it's, it's not, it's not even. I just snuck my, my stuff in, and I said, I want these projects on my own, done? They put it in, go where else is it, and it went through. Nine guys on that council, I got four-hundred and nine hundred dollars. Pretty good, politics, but this, these five people can go out and get those types of grants.
Right, and Lafayette city government cannot come in and say.
Now, the city government has nothing to say with what they do.
Right.
Two completely different fathers.
So, kinda the same scenario is whenever you come to a Karenpro city council meeting, you're representing them, you're listening, you're deciding, but you have no right to vote, you can't do anything, it'd be the same thing.
Correct.
Lafayette wouldn't have any right to come in and take your money, and, which they do right now, they kinda vote against you guys and aren't for you, you know, so.
Correct, right. And what's good about these five guys being the parish council, like with, with Mayor Russell, you know, I mean, he's done a great job in city Karenpro, you can see it. He would work with the parish councilman in his district to get funds, adjoining funds, for certain projects that's outside the city of Karenpro and outside the city of here. That goes a long ways with the federal government also. Just a big community project that, that we did with the retention project. The parish, I was able to get the one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand to help with the study, to, to make that project happen. If I wouldn't have done that, that project would have died. But as a parish member, I was able to get it because the part, anything. But as a parish member, I was able to get it because the part, anything to be studied was in the parish. So we worked together, and when the federal government seen the work, no problem, we're going to make this work, we're going to get it done. That's working together, that's the plans behind us. Not perfect, but that's a start. Any more questions? If new districts, why not do representation? Ah, ah, oh, okay. I want to make sure I cover it. I don't want to make sure I cover it. Okay, for the parish council, would it be a good idea if each major? In his home house? I can't, I can't put it out. For the parish council, would it be a good idea if each major for all cities on the parish sit on the parish council?
Mayor.
Does the city mayor sit on the parish council?
It does, it has. Who, who's question is this? I can't even figure it out. Okay, so you're talking about the mayor? Yeah. I remember I was close here, I want to get it. Putting the mayors on, on, on a council, a parish council. Uh, I don't know, I see this times. It would, it would be. Not, not, yeah, it would definitely be a conflict, but can you imagine? Six mayors sit on a council. Trying to get all the money they can for their district, for their area. You know, who's going to be the biggest stake, move over those people. It would get, it would kind of get ugly. That's why you have a separate body as administrator, as a mayor, and you have legislative branch, so you don't have to lose. The mayor might want some, council might not want the same thing. But if you put six mayors together, Lord have mercy, what's going to happen?
You need to buy six pairs of boxing gloves.
See a taste of that. However. However, the mayor's term limits would be addressed. We left the mayor, Mayor President out of the equation because, again, we didn't want to make this thing cost any more than it had to. He's the administrator for the parish and administrator for the city. So would his job be a little tougher? Absolutely. It's tough right now. He ran for it, and you would have given, whoever runs for it, you know what you count, what you're getting into. He's going to make the decision on the parish side, he's going to put it back, and he's going to put it to the city. When, when he has to argue with himself about a parish and city issue? I always see that, but when he has to make that decision on which points he's going to go for? That decision, come back down to these guys. That's who he has to say. They're going to make it. He's not going to make it. He can't pass the ordinance, he can't do anything. He's an administrator. So he can get himself up and say, well, I think I'm going to go to City of Lafayette and not the parish. Well, guess what? Got to go to both bodies. And if both bodies pass it. Three, two, three, two, and it's still a stealing? And if it's a legal issue, then things get a bit of, a bit of. But the overall scheme of this thing, there's not really a whole lot of those issues that we're trying to address. Any issues like that that it would affect, okay? So I don't think that's a problem, and if it is, it's something that needs to be addressed and will be addressed.
Are there issues which have to be, be passed, have to be passed by both bodies?
What is the daunting?
Are they here?
Yeah, employee raises.
Have to be passed by both bodies by, by the?
Yes, when employees, those type of benefits, they have to be both bodily because the parish pain and also the city pain.
Did you get like the legislature, it can't pass it?
It's not bringing bad news into the parish, please, please. I thought we were going, I thought we were going to have a family. Okay, whose idea was this? That's a good question. It was a lot of people's idea, okay? A lot of them wanted to completely stop it, a lot of them wanted to just split the council, a lot of them just stayed the same, but it's.
Who's the reg leader?
Reg leader? They don't reg leaders. Like I said, we've been there, I've been there eleven years now, and there's three other guys that have been there eleven years. So we've been looking at this for a long time, and they ain't no such thing as a reg leader. Believe me, I'm not the reg leader. Bruce Kong is not the reg leader. No one person did this, okay? The finance committee, the liaison team is the one who decided to take this off because of everything that we've meant in the last few years. That's why, no reg leader. I wish I could have been a reg leader. Maybe I could be, you know, one, it's a problem. But nobody was a reg leader. This was something that we discussed with the council members, and the council members were telling, they knew nothing about what's going on. It's not true. It's talked about every budget year, every budget is going to be talked about again coming up. We'll talk about the same scenario. How much parish money does the city have? Same thing, same problems. It just gets worse and worse until they decide to fix it. Nobody probably better fix it today. Nine members did, but nobody else to pay for it. So this is the best fix. Okay? Yes?
If you have a project in an overlapping area, how does the city made, the city or parish, you expect them to be there more delegated to parish, uh, larger city?
If it's a Lafayette project?
If it's in the city of Lafayette that also has overlapping?
Unincorporated areas? Unincorporated areas within the city?
Then if it happens in the city of Lafayette, or Karen County, whatever it is about, you also have overlapping representations for the parish representative. You're, you're the project, like a street grid up, a rain, whatever. How is it decided? Is that a city budget problem or parish budget problem?
It's a city budget problem that gets to the, gets to the city car limit line, and then from the city car limit line into the parish, it becomes a parish. Just like it is today.
Even though a particular area may be most important, city may not?
It's, doesn't matter. When it gets to that car limit line, city car limit line, the city's responsibility stops, and then the parish is woe. Or if it's not a city, then that city is woe. So it's, they don't, they don't share.
Will you share administrative support and staff?
For the council office? Yes. The, we have, right currently, we have two assistants for council members. One hand is five members, which is the city members, and the other one hand is four members right now. That person would pick up the fifth parish member, so there's no hiring of new employees. There's more office space, there's enough office space than the current authority will have, but not add anything, so there's no pause.
I remember some salesmanship from parts of civic leaders, what they're doing now, selling this idea. I remember back in the nineties, there were people, people just passionate about consolidation, make it real, make it real simple, blah, 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 blah. What failed?
What failed? From nineteen sixty-nine?
From their being loose to make consolidation in government, till now, it's obviously not working. What failed?
It's the process, the actual consolidation failed.
So, were the people, uh, failed to make it work, or was the process to begin with unworking?
The process from the beginning, it wasn't supposed to stay as is forever. The, the people who worked on this charter, the consolidation government, envisioned that one day, everybody would pay the same tax, parish bond. They had, they had some visions of things happening in parish bond, and none of that happened. Uh, when we deemed what's different in municipalities and, and, and unincorporated area, nobody thinks the same, nobody does think the same. So the visionaries who put this consolidation government together were hoping, one day, that everybody would get together, have one type of sales tax, everybody pay the same thing across the board. You could ask anyone that, that developed the plan, that's, that was their vision, that way one is to be spitting for everyone. But that never happened, because you have too many personalities involved in the whole process. Yes, ma'am?
We're, we're a lot of utilities, and we have a hiring agreement. We were told we were not getting another one, because there's just no money in the budget. So if there's no money in the budget, then how can you justify adding an additional company? Because there is salary, there is, there is a lot of.
Let me tell you something, you're going to get a raise this year, okay? Whoever told you that? Apparently, it must have been your director or somebody, but I'm telling you as a councilman, you're going to get a raise. And it's not going to come from the council or the district. He doesn't do it, we are doing it. You guys just got a raise in three years?
Three years.
That, you think that's fair?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. So we propose that. A lot of people will flip on top, they can cut flips, but we are proposing, we're going to propose an increase for the class. That's, y'all have, nobody's had a raise in three years. That doesn't make any sense. Everything will happen in three years, right? Yeah, okay. But that, that's going to change. That is LUS, all employees.
And all of LCG.
Everybody that works there. And that, I'm sure that can make any difference, that's going to make our city parish president happy, that's enough. Yes, sir? Just a second, hang on a second.
The, you know, relative to raises being good, a lot of self-employed people aren't, aren't getting raises. I mean, the economy is just the way it is. So many of them have even seen their incomes drop. So they're not even thinking about raises. So that's always a consideration, but they got to still pay their taxes. Now, how does LUS, uh, provide services? Do they provide services to some of these incorporated municipalities? Water, sewage, like just like?
Yeah, they sell water to some municipalities. Uh, Pusso, Scott, I think, I think they sell to Milton, they, they sell water, yeah, they sell water to these, some of these cities. These cities have water plants. They don't have enough to handle their, their, uh, practices. So they do buy water from LUS in certain, so City of Karen doesn't because they have their own practices. But like Pusso does, I'm not sure, Youngville might, and Milton, I think it's the southern part that actually, Scott, I think Scott.
Scott, okay, so with this new proposal, laws to do what they want to do, and I know that LUS is really going to be a Lafayette concern because it's a Lafayette.
So my citizens of Lafayette.
But, uh, is that going to be, because right now, the way that it's set up, isn't that going to be voted on by parish?
It's a city on utility government, but the citizens of the city of Lafayette.
But because of our current governance, we have consolidated government.
Correct, correct. The LPUA currently, that's in place, they make the decisions on, on how LUS is running. It comes to councils for ratification and all, we all support LPUA because it's a city on utility. When we make this split, that LPUA is going to go over, the five city council members will become the new holder directors for LUS.
Isn't there a proposal that has to do, and I've heard this, I don't know this, I'm asking, is there a proposal to either sell or to do away with the?
I'm going to tell you like I tell everybody. I found out about that when you saw it on TV, same night. I don't know anything about it, I can't answer any questions about it, so until I get answers, I don't know. I'm the opinion, I don't know nothing about the state of the affairs. Just what I see on TV.
Well, how do we find out?
Good question. When you figure it out, then you know it, because you can ask.
Well, whom do we, whom do we ask?
Your city parish president, parents of most tall. Okay.
With, if we were a traumatic disaster, we're having to separate council, will funding for natural disasters be?
For natural disaster, the parish council has, and the parish president is the authority. They have to approve it and accept it to help in the affairs or request it. Uh, yes, it has to go through the parish to get the funds. And, uh, when Karen County flooded in two thousand twelve, devastated Karen County, we tried to get some funding, get some help. But we had to go to the parish president first because the parish is the ultimate authority here. So that's who, that's how it works. That one thing, the parish will make the decision on all, all that. Ooh, no questions.
Um, so right now, you talk about the minority majority district. When we split the five, are we only required to have one minority majority district instead of, now we have two?
What, what it is, depending on the, uh, population, the minorities, depends on how many districts you have. So when the numbers, when you start moving the numbers around, I talked about earlier, uh, you have to make sure that you have to have one minority or minority district. But you have to have one. Now, the population overall proves that you have to have two, but then you have to have two. The Department of Justice, that's what, that's what they tell you. You have to follow their rules. And when you break, when you break the city down into the population, how many people you have inside the city limits of Lafayette? You see where they live, you see where the distance is, and then you start, if you know the northeast is, that's a nice area. I don't know, thank you, Dylan. But the northeast district, we know is every minority population. And as you move a little north and west, it's, it's, it's getting a heavier population of minorities. So when we run the numbers again, we're going to see how that affects it. And if it, if it, if it proves that you have to have two, then you will see two majority minority districts on the city council.
But right now, it's just?
We're going, we're probably going, population drives that, that number. It's population.
What's the timeline on the map? Like, well, like the one that y'all vote on August seventh will be the final one that we book for in December?
Yes, the one that comes out, yes. Uh, we're getting closer, as I said, on the maps and the language of the chart. I'm hoping we release the language of the chart by Friday tomorrow. Uh, we have a couple of changes to make today, so it'll be Monday. The map itself, uh, I'm hoping that it read about Winston. Uh, Mike is out of the Georgia City in support, so he gets back and back together, you know, the person, you know, go back over it again. And it's, and it's starting to develop again, and I would like to turn that into some wind next month. So at least everyone will have a couple weeks to see, look at it, uh, call the councilmen, whether they agree or disagree, meet with them, you meet with them, you meet and talk about it, uh, and it's going to be there. And if it is adopted on the seventh of August, the election is December eighth. So you have from next Wednesday to December eighth, the past council, to decide if you like it or you don't. If you like it, yes. If you don't, no. That's where it should be decided, in the ballot, not by politics.
Simply, if, if that's a small election, it's not a major?
That, uh, that election is going to be a runoff election for Congress. The timeframe that we had, we didn't, we couldn't have it in November election because we didn't have the time. What you do is you have to find out what your election dates are, and then you're backwards, you have to, you have to move information about. I mean, you got, they, they got the most ridiculous ever in my life, okay, to get into this dump. But you see, we could have won, we could have won in March. And if you could have did that in March, which I thought, uh-oh. And that's what we tried to do. We just, when it was ready, we didn't have, we had missed that day, that day was two months earlier. We just, when it wasn't ready, we didn't have, we had missed that date, that date was two months early. And the way it was where, wouldn't ready, we didn't have it ready. And that's, and December 8th, we had a charter, December 8th, March. And I always support March. I want it as close as I can to the main election. So we had that to the door at the council. Because if you were to put that thing in March. Can you, you think? Would a 30% the last time they went out in March to vote? No, this is too important, I have just 30% of people that the parish can decide. I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm just concerned, I'm kinda, why are you so adamant about pushing this plan? And it seems to me that you're digressing and going back to the unit system of governing. You know, unit system of government, low police jury system, you start a unit system of government. Each police juror had a particular district, and then became king of that district. In other words, if I was a police juror in a particular district, I perpetuated in an office, or who knows, 20, 30 years. So they got away from that system, and there was a duplication of services. There was an overlapping districts. So they went to the consolidated plan, okay? And this gentleman over there asking, what happened? Why didn't it work? It worked all over the country, it's not working here. I think it's been because of mismanagement, that's my personal opinion. Aren't we digressing, going back to what we had before? Why is this, why is this better than what we have now?
We're not digressing. Nobody's king. Nobody's king. You there for 12 years. Now you keep your king for 12 years, but that's it. You're out. So nobody's just staying there 30 years and no more. As a deputy, we're not digressing. We're trying to best for the population of Lafayette. Lafayette parish. That's, this is all, is the very foundation. We're not diluting any districts. We give the city Lafayette autonomy, just like every city has, and they deserve it. Opposites have it. We're forming this parish government to take care of our needs. We are in bad shape. So we're not digressing, we're trying to fall, and that's the only way that it can happen. Right now, with five full council members, can't happen, and it's not gonna happen. So we need to have a parish government, parish is conscious. Not the, conscious making rules to say. So we're not digressing, we're moving forward. And I understand what you mean, it's a key thing with that.
I don't know how I'd say about a king, like I didn't put this as a king. I gave an example of what the term was used as far as police juror. I didn't say anything about a king. I was just speaking to the audience.
We're not, we're not, we're not back to the.
No, nobody's a king, nobody's above the law.
That's right, exactly.
I understand that.
Yes.
So Jay, you mentioned earlier that there are revisions to the plan as you go along. When is the last date for all of these revisions? Because we see what the plan is today.
Right.
But if you're making revisions, we don't see those right now, and when will we receive?
You're gonna see, I'm hoping that we have it ready Wednesday, so what we should call, is to get that to the house.
That's the last date of revision?
Well, that's, well, that's the last revision you have to make. I mean, who can make revision all the way to August 7th at the meeting, if we have to? But the one that's coming out Wednesday, it will be the latest revision that we have for people to look at. That appearance, that appearance will be the last. It may change again, who knows? But I'm releasing one on Wednesday for the people.
Have you had prior approval by the Department of Justice of your plan?
The demographer has his rules that he follows. And he's the one, well, once the final plan is adopted, the Department of Justice looks at it. He did not only get it to this, it's adopted by the governor, that's what he did. Right, nothing is approved till it is. The people go vote this way, but the Department of Justice is one of the things they want to follow. Adopting this by the council. He says, this is what we want. They gotta look at it. And if it's not, if it's not, yes, ma'am.
Can y'all even discuss the council and the mayor? You just said, you have my ancient issue. And I have an issue with having the same man represent the parish and the city of Lafayette. I'm all collective having their own mayor, their own council member, so they can write grants and do the things they can do that other surrounding cities do. But I don't, I don't agree with having the same person to represent. Have y'all discussed that?
Yes, we did.
Don't tell me about that.
It's about me. I hate to tell you, it's about me. But the reason we get to go with two separately, because of the consolidation of the services that they buy. If you have a parish president and a mayor separated, then you're gonna have, you may have a Tennessee classroom, what you think best for you. So with this one guy making the decision, he has to make it for everybody. Two is not good. Plus, another parish president costs about $150,000. Now, top, the added experience of government. So it's negative all the way around. Outside of total deconsolidation, that's the worst idea that has.
I heard the mayor president did not take the position on this plan. And I heard specifically what he said, he intended to say that, but he said, I would need to see how the parish and the city of Lafayette before can make a decision.
I understand that. He has, he has to look at both sides of it. He can't look at just one side. He has to get the whole, the whole thing. I understand that. Again, let me tell you, if y'all wanna spend more money, let's do it. I'm in it. It just costs, it's cost effective, and it's the best method at this time. You wanna pay for it, we can do it. That is not an issue. And I'll tell that to anyone. If you want it a certain way, you're gonna have to pay for it that way. This is the least cost effective plan we can come up with, the best plan we can come up with. And I understand everybody's frustration. If you got something better, bring it to the table.
Mr. Castiel, Mr. Robideau was elected on the present. He wasn't elected on this proposed idea.
And Mr. Robideau, the next parish president, mayor president will be elected on the same deal that he ran. He's gonna be the mayor president of Lafayette parish. That's, that's it, same thing. Nothing changed. He's not gonna be elected as the mayor of Lafayette. He's gonna be the mayor president of Lafayette parish.
The change of any of the titles of reason?
Yes, the representative of the city. That's right. Just like we have a mayor versus camera, and a mayor versus Pusar, same reason. Same fair treatment. That's what we can. It's not perfect. The other first thing that I did, not perfect. But that matter of the box, it's about the other law, okay? It's a population issue. Population issue, just, just. Okay, all right. Okay, 48, you're happy. Oh, what is coming? Somebody snuck one in. Would the change be proposed with? Whatever.
You didn't get your submission.
Yeah, they could.
That was his issue. If a parent or mom has two children, she wants to give them parents across the board. But if I had a nonpartially, nonpartially person, a friend, she's gonna treat my children different. Because she has different feelings for my children. So I'm just saying, everybody I spoke to, yeah, a whole bunch of people, they say separate. If you wanna have a mayor of Lafayette, and you want that person to represent Lafayette, the mayor of Caracol represents Caracol. But he's not the consolidated government council, you know, president, parish president. So they say separate.
He, I understand, I understand. It's not the first time here. He as a parish, as a mayor president, he has the obligation to distribute his parish dollars in his parish, and his city dollars in his city. So I don't know how much funding the council is gonna have to do, because that's divided already. We don't have to worry about dividing funds or co-keeping funds. We don't have to worry about it. Parish money, he has to spend his parish money. City money, he gotta spend his city money, that's it. Now, when we talk about the benefits for employees, they have whole bodies that are going on. He's the guy who's in the city that is making the day. So I hear you saying, it's a bad idea, but deconsolidation? Then you have a parish president and you say that. But we're not deconsolidating, just through the councils to make sure we can get some deeper representation everywhere. That's what we do. And I hear you saying, it's not gonna work. Another term. I have a judge, a DA, and an assistant DA.
We have a difference, but tonight, tonight we don't have a difference. I wanna tell you, I did not have any preparation to, you know, about when you all were going to, to open. It's a bold plan, I have to tell you, you show a lot of guts. Those that are proposing, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions that have no answers to. But I think the concept, at least if you're trying to suggest is that there is a body that should represent the parish, that should be higher than Lafayette consolidation.
Got it.
It should be.
That's one term you could see it right, you could say.
Because you know, we've been talking about the unincorporated areas versus the incorporated areas. The parish of Lafayette is not an unincorporated area.
Correct.
You're not suggesting, this is gonna be a body of five individuals who represent the unincorporated area. They represent the entire parish, they have to represent the entire parish, because there's, there's at least $10 million worth of expenses that are parish expenses. Everybody in here gets, I'm not tooting my horn, everybody in here gets the advantage of the services of the DA, of course, jail. Everybody, it's not just, it shouldn't be, and it shouldn't be just the sole expense of the unincorporated areas. Now, it's not a problem because of annexations, and that's really what has generated this loss of interest. So I see this as happening, and to help me get through this, this question is, how are we going to elect five people who are going to make first in terms of the entire parish? When those individuals are being elected by both unincorporated areas and certain forces of the city of Lafayette paraphrased? When questions arise, and there will be, there will be some questions that will come up that set up a conflict between the parish and what's best for the municipality. But the only way I see that we are gonna survive with the parish expenses is to raise taxes. I mean, I've said that before. I've said, you know, I was the first one to say, I'd be prepared to commit that political suicide. It's gonna come down to that. It's gonna come down to that parish government having the notion to rise above their responsibilities, their loyalty to their individual cities. And actually force that question to be determined inside of the end of the season. Eric Rose is gonna have to come up with something, Scott will have to come up with something. You cannot continue, you're right, you can't tell the cities you're, you can no longer incorporate. What we have to tell the cities is that you're gonna all have to pay your share, your fair share of all the expenses of the parish. That's not just a set of something, that's the future. You know, I've got two kids, one of them doesn't live in Lafayette parish. I think a lot of families in that, like some markets had to move out because they can't find the right life here in Lafayette. And we have to stop talking in terms of Lafayette it is. Because we just always assume that means the city of Lafayette. We've seen what's happened over the past 20 years, city of Lafayette, now $600 million to the bed. The parish is not even $100 million to the bed. So if we, you know, if we can force this eventual confrontation between this parish government and everyone else, you know, if that parish government, the five, can elevate themselves to be the kings, it will be the kings and queens of Lafayette parish. There's gonna be some decisions that we are, and have to be convinced, we push off the door.
It's gonna be some tough decisions to be made by the parish council. As I said again, the parish is supposed to be the supreme leader in the process.
We're not.
And we're not. And you need to get this, to build a backup, if you're offering. 12 million, 10 million dedicated, I mean, you know. 10 million is dedicated, anybody knows it's that guy. You know, 10 million is dedicated, that they have to pay, it's mandated by state. At least it's $2 million the parish is owed. $2 million the parish is owed. A parish of 245,000 people. It's gotta stop. It has to stop. The only way to stop it is to start something new. And, you know, you can, this is a agreement tonight, please go with the other guy. If you got a better solution, you can call. I'll call you back. Prada knows, things happen.
When we send the emails, we get something back to the Cessie Redd, point broke, five sounds.
That's all I'm fond of, though. Yes, sir.
Just one week, I want you to send me that, just one week. The parish council members are running on in their district or parish block.
In their district, by the district. Okay.
I know this doesn't contain television. The way the oil industry just come back. I heard two people come in.
Ah, I don't know.
No, I see you come back.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on one second, God, hang on.
And it's expression of things, because in Iowa. And out there in Indiana, this is real, I think, real significant. And that's the essence of what this community stands for, that it will come, stand. And listen and answer, try to deal with some tough questions. And of course, that's what we're having, big stuff. But seriously, I'm serious, I really want to thank you for the point. For me, for the whole community.
When I ran for the position, I mean, I've always wanted to do something like this. You know, I've helped people, I've helped people for 20 years. I've helped people in their worst times. So I enjoy helping, so I don't mind taking the tough one. I mean, God's a good question. Hey, I went to two other towns, your question is a little tougher than that. Because they, the cities, it's a different concept. Make a body, you're grateful, it makes a difference. And I told them, we have any city council members in there? But I appreciate the judges, and call if you have anything, or any questions. Email, or read it, and I, and I will call back. Well, you ain't as bad when you call your own front of people, right? But things happen, who knows? Who knows what happens? But I try my best. Thank y'all for coming, appreciate y'all, and please support us, thank you.